Everyone, welcome to tonight's school board work session here at the Educational Service Center. The day is Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand and seventeen. The time is six oh four P M. Tonight's purpose is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. The topic for tonight is World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan Priority Work Update: Implementation of the Enrollment and Capacity Management Framework Will Lead to Increased Community Trust in the School District Through Engagement in Long-Range Planning for Enrollment and Building Use. Our outcomes for tonight: Our board members will gain a shared understanding of the data and current reality for enrollment and capacity planning, and understand the process that led to the development of next steps in this priority work. And with that, we'll start off with a check-in. Bob Gerhart, school board member.
Kate McGuire, superintendent.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
Mike Ostafi, board member.
Jim Brigat, school board member.
Stephanie Fortner, school board member.
Brian Severson Hall, community education director.
Kim Reskrip, interim chief technology officer.
Barb Olson, director of school community relations.
Tim Palmetier, general counsel.
Steve Felsk, assistant superintendent.
Kim Heil, assistant superintendent.
Patricia Magnuson, executive director of finance and operations.
And Lanay Shown with Wold Architects and Engineers.
All right, thanks, everybody. And with that, I will turn things over to Dr. McGuire.
All right, thank you, Bob. So ladies and gentlemen, welcome tonight. We're in the boardroom tonight for our work session, as opposed to the forum room where we usually are, because we want to be on video and be livestreamed tonight as if it were like a regular school board meeting. And the reason for the deviation from our regular pattern of school board work sessions in the forum room is because it's part of our commitment to have all of the ECHMAC work be videotaped and livestreamed to enhance community trust. That's part of the priority goal of this work. And we want to make sure that we're doing a really good job of not only putting out on video, but putting all the materials for ECHMAC around this work on the website as well. We, and actually, part of the effort also was having community members and staff members involved in the ECHMAC work. Patricia will be talking a little bit more about that. But being here for our work session tonight is part of that effort for transparency and good improved communication. So with that in mind, when you do share in the conversation tonight, please make sure that you talk into a microphone like you would during a board meeting so that it can be heard on the video. So thank you for that. And I'm going to invite Patricia to begin. She'll introduce our guest, Lanay Shown from Wold Architects. Patricia.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Gerhart, Superintendent McGuire, and board members. The beginning of tonight's presentation should seem very familiar to you. You heard a lot of this information when we presented to you back in May of two thousand and seventeen. We placed this part of the presentation back on tonight's agenda because we want to be very transparent, as Dr. McGuire was saying, with our community, because our intent is to increase trust about the district's engagement in this work about enrollment and capacity management. As you might recall, we made some very important and transformational changes to our process by engaging with an enrollment and capacity management advisory committee. And I just want to say, there's many of our advisory committee members here tonight. So if you want to just throw up a hand, if you're one of our community members that's here from ECHMAC, I'm very thankful that they are here tonight. And we have several of our staff members here as well who also serve on ECHMAC. So I'm really glad to have them here tonight, walking along this journey with us. And so it's really important to just understand that framework. So we're going to get to these two outcomes, but first, we're going to do a little background information. So first, I'm just going to review the ECHMAC framework and our two thousand and sixteen-seventeen summary of progress document. And that document was loaded with the board materials. I'm not going to go through it in detail, but we'll review it in this slide tonight. So with the intent of increasing community trust and transparency with Osseo area schools and the communities it serves, a task force of parents, school district staff, and committee, and community members was assembled back in two thousand and fifteen. And we created a framework to identify, analyze, and communicate issues related to enrollment and capacity management. We engaged in an eighteen-month study of all of the factors that affect facility use. And ultimately, in the spring of two thousand and sixteen, about a year and a half ago, we recommended the adoption of the framework that you see up in this slide. And I want to take you through this because each color, shape, and word on the framework had a specific purpose. So first, at the top of the framework, you'll note that the purpose of the framework is to increase community trust in Osseo area schools through engagement in long-range planning for enrollment and building use. And vital to the framework is that we have students at the center. This keeps us mission-focused and clear about who the framework is designed to serve. So you'll notice the color key with a light blue box on the left that refers to the roles of sort of us at the table, the school board, superintendent, and administration. The darker blue box refers to the role of the enrollment and capacity management advisory committee. So ECHMAC is how we're going to refer to that advisory committee. Their work is depicted by the blue boxes along the right side of the framework and the work of staff. And the school board is depicted along the left-hand side of the framework. And the inner circle that surrounds our students is the work of the staff that's related to enrollment and capacity management. It's things like projecting student enrollment, holding our open enrollment lotteries, the stuff that happens at the enrollment center, the work we do to consider building capacity and make staffing recommendations that align with our enrollment and available capacity. So then another part of our framework is that little arrow. It's a really important little arrow that the ongoing staff, of the work that the staff does, produces data over time. And so what we do is produce that data and bring it to the enrollment and capacity management advisory committee. And they analyze the data and use it in making their observations and recommendations. And those observations are communicated to administration. So you can see it's a cyclical pattern. Work from ECHMAC is handed off to the administration, and we communicate it with the school board and with the community. So any recommended actions might affect ongoing staff work. And any data that results from that work gets fed back in to the ECHMAC, and the process just keeps continuing. A really important part of the framework are the guiding principles, and those are depicted along the right-hand side, some of the most important parts of the framework. And what they guide are the recommendations and observations that the committee makes. And I'm just going to read through them because they were, they are very important to the framework. That our recommendations must be concise and informed by data. That they must align with the district's racial equity work. They must be sustainable. Identify and examine the implications for all students. Identify potential costs and consider funding strategies. And be made with as much advance notice as possible when change is recommended. So we use those guiding principles to move back and forth into the framework. The next series of slides is designed to remind the board about the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen ECHMAC journey. I'm going to take you back through the work that we did last school year. So this slide depicts the hopes that we had for our work. And it was the work expressed by our committee members last year at the beginning of the year. I was excited then, and still am, to see things like create community engagement, build community trust, create solutions, and generate new ideas. It tells me that the members of ECHMAC had hopes that aligned with our purpose. So that was a good sign. We held an orientation of this year's ECHMAC for twenty-seven eighteen in September, and we did a similar exercise. And we start to see the same kinds of hopes emerge. And I do want to say I don't take lightly the time commitment that we are asking. There's almost thirty community members this year, and they're here with us tonight, and that is really important. We have a serious task to build, maintain, and increase trust, and I greatly appreciate all of that time. This next series are some pictures you might recognize from last year of our work together. In two thousand and sixteen-seventeen, we held our meetings in four schools. This year, we have plans to hold meetings at Fernbrook Elementary, Maple Grove Middle School, Park Center Senior High School, and Garden City Elementary. And ECHMAC members consistently told us that these school visits are informative and helpful in gaining district perspective. Of course, the bulk of the meeting time is spent learning about enrollment and capacity data, how the district compiles the data, and the work of the district to communicate this complicated data. This team effort helps us build a shared understanding of the data and has an important impact for decision-making. The ECHMAC wrote its two thousand and sixteen-seventeen summary of progress report last spring. We pored over every word, every chart, and every graph so that the information was very clear. The input and the feedback that we got from the individual and collective ECHMAC committee helped us to create a report that is clear and understandable for the community. And I expect we'll just continue to get better over time. This is a photo of some of our ECHMAC team members. This year, as I said, we've nearly doubled the number of community members who serve on ECHMAC. So there's about thirty members from the community. That serves to broaden our participation and ensure that as many community members as possible are present for each meeting. Now I'll briefly review the information that was included in the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen ECHMAC summary of progress document. I did not print that, but it was loaded with the board materials. The executive summary at the front of the summary of progress document is designed to be liftable, meaning if you just read that, you would understand the contents of the report. It could stand on its own. One of our guiding principles for observations and recommendations is that they'll be guided and informed by data. Through that lens, we expect data-informed observations and recommendations. We wanted to be clear that we were recommending items for study for potential action. We weren't recommending any action or making any decisions at the time. The recommendations for study should not be construed to imply that action will be taken in any of those areas or to include judgment or opinion about the merits of any action. So during the eighteen-month process where we created the framework, the original task force identified five potential actions that could result from observations and recommendations about enrollment and building use. These observations and recommendations could be made following our study in any year. And they include these: attendance area adjustments, building a school, constructing additions to a school, closing a school, or even doing nothing. The two thousand and sixteen-seventeen summary of progress report includes recommendations for study for potential action in three of those areas: attendance area adjustments, building a school, and constructing additions to a school. While closing a school is a possible outcome that exists within the ECHMAC framework, the advisory committee found no reason, there was just no reason last year, to recommend study of a potential school closure at this time. Enrollment data is described in detail in section two of the summary of progress report. The report describes how the grade level, five-year enrollment projections are built. This process includes many inputs such as birth rates in the county in order to protect, project future kindergarten enrollments, and enrollment trend data over various periods of time by grade and by school. There's an important consideration in projecting enrollment using historical patterns. It can only be relied upon to create reasonable enrollment projections when historical patterns can be expected to hold. So when a break in pattern can be predicted, projections are adjusted to reflect the pattern breaks. So things like new housing developments or the addition of a charter school in the boundary area or the closure of a charter school are things that can cause breaks in pattern. And when we see those breaks or experience a break in pattern like that, we adjust projections. So in the past, in our district, we've, we've been experiencing a pattern break after the change in grade span. We had a growth at ninth grade that can, that seems to be holding over time. So this fall, one of the first things ECHMAC will do is look at the fall two thousand and seventeen enrollment and see if there's any new pattern breaks. Because projecting out future enrollment is a vital part, as you would expect, of determining how much space we need in the district. Capacity data is described in section three of the report. One important learning for the committee and even back to the original task force is that capacity is not a fixed number for a school. It's not like the number that the fire marshal will allow in a building. A capacity of the school has many factors, and we learned even more about that this summer as we worked with WOLD. But at the time, we helped, we helped to gain a collective understanding as an, as an ECHMAC group that the number of students a building can accommodate, or what we've referred to as its capacity, is affected by a number of factors. Things like which class size targets we have for the grade levels served in a building, the number of grade levels served in a building, any funds that might be used to reduce class size, the educational needs of students for grade-level classrooms, and then any specialized educational programs such as music, arts, or technology. Any specialized educational needs of students such as special ed and English learners and programs located at a school at the direction of the school district, such as special education or preschool. And finally, programming identified by the principal, teachers, and staff intended to satisfy specific needs of the students served by the school community, such as large motor rooms or meeting spaces that might be necessary. Because the manner in which space is used by a particular school is determined in large part by the students it serves. The number of students that can be served by a school varies. And tonight Lanay will take you some, through some more details about that. We tested ECHMAC's high-level analysis about capacity over the summer with the work of the, with the architect. And as I said, you'll learn a little bit more about that tonight. We have seven meetings planned for twenty-seven eighteen, and those are here. And as usual, we will continue to post each of our documents from ECHMAC meetings on our district website, districttwo seventy-nine dot org. And community members who would like to be considered for ECHMAC membership should watch for the application notifications each spring. We want to continue to add members each year so that we can maintain continuity as members retire from service. And I don't think anyone needs to ever retire. We want them all.
And Patricia, there are board members who serve on ECHMAC as well, right?
Right, that's right, yes.
In addition to community members, and in addition to staff members, we have two board members who participate as well.
Director Ostafi and Director Douglas, yes. Thank you for reminding me of that. Thank you for your service, too. In May of two thousand and seventeen, the board supported the superintendent's recommendations for studies, for study in the areas which were identified by ECHMAC. And we have a couple of maps that were, that were produced at the request of ECHMAC that summarize those areas of study, and then I'm going to go into them in a little more detail. So for the purposes of this presentation, we added the arrows to this, to this map so you can visually see how the recommendations were made. So you'll see a bunch of purple arrows. And from the key, you can see that the purple arrows refer to five-year enrollment trends. So if there's an upward purple arrow, it depicts projected enrollment growth of more than ten percent, pointing to one of the schools. And you'll see this trend at Garden City, Oakview, Park Brook, and Fernbrook. A downward arrow depicts projected enrollment decline of greater than ten percent. And you'd see this trend at Cedar Island and Zane Wood. And the orange arrows then depict capacity usage for two thousand and sixteen-seventeen. An upward arrow depicts current capacity usage, this would have been last year's capacity usage, that is ten percent above the district average for elementary schools. And a downward arrow depicts capacity usage that is ten percent below the district average for elementary use. And you see this at Oakview, Park Brook, Crestview, and Birch Grove. These were the schools that were recommended for study. And because Oakview and Park Brook had combined conditions of capacity and, and enrollment that would resolve themselves, we didn't include them in the spring two thousand and seventeen recommendations. Then this next slide contains our secondary schools. So both the middle schools and the senior highs are here. Again, the purple arrow depicts five-year enrollment trends. An upward purple arrow depicts projected enrollment growth of at least five percent. We used five percent rather than the ten percent growth for senior highs because, as I referred to earlier, we had that break in pattern that showed ninth grade growing. And we knew that that growth would, should continue through the four grades. So we set the bar at a little lower level at five percent for study. The orange arrows depict capacity usage for the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen school year. If you look at then all of the purple arrows, everything is upward-facing. So it shows that each of our senior high schools is projected to have enrollment growth, or was last year at this time, of at least five percent over the next five years. All of the middle schools were projected to have less than a five percent change in enrollment in the next five years, so they were not noted on the map. They weren't declining, and they weren't growing by more than five percent. And so then they had, they did not have a recommendation for study. For secondary schools, what we did was use a proxy for capacity. We used the school's status of being available for open enrollment at the first lottery. So you'll see upward-facing arrows at two schools, Maple Grove Middle School and Maple Grove Senior High School. So due to enrollment growth that was projected, the committee's recommendation included studying potential additions at all three of the, of the comprehensive senior high schools. Maple Grove Middle School did not emerge for recommended study last year due to flat projected enrollment. The committee will continue to monitor the status of this school over time. Then we made some recommendations. We considered both enrollment and capacity and made recommendations in these four areas. And I'm going to go through them in a little more detail. Last May, we foreshadowed that we would engage the surface, the services of an architectural firm who specializes in these types of studies, and later you'll get to hear from Lanay, from Wold Architects and Engineers, who we did engage over the summer. Last spring, we thought that our recommended study would include the development of a timeline, concept drawings, and cost estimates. And over the summer, we learned a lot about industry best practices. And now we understand that we need to step back, gather some more data before we can move on to some next steps. ECHMAC recommended last spring that we study possible options for increasing the size of the attendance areas at Cedar Island, Crestview, and Zane Wood in order to increase enrollment at these schools. ECHMAC also recommended that we study possible options for reducing the size of the attendance areas at Basswood, Fernbrook, Garden City, and Rush Creek in order to lower the enrollment at these schools. What we have learned is that we need to gather some additional data before studying those recommendations further. You'll learn a little bit more about that in a bit. ECHMAC recommended that we study potential strategies to increase enrollment at Birch Grove Elementary School for the Arts within the next two to five years. We will continue to monitor enrollment at Birch Grove, and no action has been taken on this recommendation yet. ECHMAC recommended that we study possible options to construct additions to Basswood, Fernbrook, Garden City, and Rush Creek Elementary Schools, and at all three of our comprehensive senior high schools. As we foreshadowed in May, we have engaged the services of an architectural firm who specializes in those studies to help us with that recommendation. And finally, ECHMAC recommended that we study possible options to build a new, a new elementary school on district-owned property in northwest Maple Grove. Again, we have learned that we need to gather some more data before we can study that recommendation further. And again, you'll learn a little bit more about that later tonight. Before we describe the work that was completed this past summer, I want to re-ground us in the bigger picture of how the work of ECHMAC fits into our strategic plan. The work of ECHMAC is a board-approved, is board-approved strategic priority work for two thousand and seventeen-eighteen. And I'm just going to read that strategic priority goal, that implementation of the enrollment and capacity management framework will lead to increased trust in the school district through engagement in long-range planning for enrollment and capacity use. Our learnings over this past summer about industry best practices helped us to understand that an essential first step is to build shared understanding prior to considering any options. This shared understanding is critical for all stakeholder groups, including the school board, staff, and community members. This work is about building trust through long-range planning, which requires a long-term mindset. In May, we engaged the services of Wold Architects and Engineers.
Can I just pause there just for a second to see if board members, especially those who have participated in ECHMAC, want to add anything to that background or context? So ECHMAC members who are here and board members and cabinet members have heard some of this information before, much of it, from our May presentation for ECHMAC. And for the purposes of maintaining transparency and being good communicators, every time that we have a presentation around the ECHMAC work, we're going to re-ground ourselves in the priority work, the background and the context, because it's really important to build a shared understanding and to maintain good communication so that as members of the community literally tune in to this work, because we're videotaping it, that they understand that this has a long history and that it doesn't just appear in one board work session next spring, for example. So we'll always re-ground ourselves in that background and context to build a shared understanding. Does anyone else, or board members, or does anyone else want to make any contribution to the understanding about where we are so far in background or context?
I feel like Patricia's done a great job of doing that.
Okay.
Anything to add? Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to go into more detail about what happened with those recommendations that you provided direction on last spring, and what was the work that occurred over the summer. Alongside, mind you, thirty-six million dollars of long-term facility maintenance work that also was occurring at the same time.
So as I said, in May, we engaged Wold Architect, Architects and Engineers. They have experience with Minnesota Public Schools, and they have introduced our team to some industry best practices in capacity management work. So I'm going to introduce Lanay Shown. She can tell you about the firm's background, her background, and then she'll dive into the work we did this summer.
Great, thank you. Chair Gerhart, Superintendent McGuire, board members, thank you so much for having me here tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity. We've been through an exciting time over the summer to really roll up our sleeves and get to know your district. And I guess I'd like to share a little bit about who we are as a company, and then a little bit about my personal background. Wold Architects and Engineers, again, as Patricia had mentioned, is really rooted in Minnesota pre-K-12 education. It has been our bread and butter in regards to the type of work that we do every day. Not only do we do work here in Minnesota, we do also regional work within the Denver area. We also do regional work within the Chicagoland area. And so that helps us really get to know not only our community here in Minnesota, but bring expertise and ideas from other regions in the nation and in regards to coming up with solutions and ideas for each community's challenges. Again, my name is Lanay Shown. My personal background, I've actually grown up with Wold Architects and Engineers. Right out of school, started with a company twenty years ago. And so I've had the wonderful opportunity to not only do the project management, do all of the drafting, but now really take great joy in doing a lot of the long-range planning for school districts. Not only such as yourself, but I'm currently working with Wayzetta Public Schools, one of your neighbors. So I've been working with them closely on their, not only their long-range plan, but much of their implementation now with elementary schools happening. We also do work with Elk River, another neighbor of yours, Roseville. And we have just been doing a ton of work in Edina Public Schools, turned that district upside down with their large referendum that they passed a year or so ago. So that's a little bit about us. One of the first things that I wanted to introduce and talk about is really thinking about industry standard practice when it comes to facilities analysis. One of the wonderful things that One of the wonderful things that Patricia introduced me to in regards to the process that you've gone through thus far in this district is your ECHMAC process. With any project or long-range plan, we really believe in a participatory planning process. And it was just a joy to understand that there was already a predetermined community group that was understanding the foundation of the two key pieces that really affect your facilities, as Patricia had mentioned, and that's enrollment and the capacity piece of that. So with that being said, as we talk about the process here, ECHMAC really takes on a large role of helping us as a sounding board and helping us as a design firm in understanding who your community is. But they help us with that checks and balance system there. So the first step that I really want to talk about is really gathering data. And that's what we have spent most of the summer doing here within the district. And we're really preparing for the development of options and recommendations in the end. But we know that for that successful outcome, we have to have data and we have to have our need defined. A good plan would build support to each step. And the framework and community groups such as ECHMAC is an ideal structure for this. So again, as we gather data, very much look forward to working with this group through this planning cycle and sharing that information and gathering that information together. The next step in what we would call industry standard practice is really interpreting the data. Once again, the data's gathered, but it must be interpreted to understand its meaning and to establish its factual information. Again, the ECHMAC framework provides a well-trained community group to provide input as data is interpreted. And this ensures that the multiple perspectives are applied to data interpretation. Some of the work that we did this summer was really rolling up our sleeves, walking the buildings, meeting with your principals, not only looking at the data that ECHMAC had already produced, but trying to understand the gray area in regards to how are these facilities really being utilized? Utilization is also another key piece that affects your facilities planning. Because utilization, just like capacity, can change from one year to the next. So once we get through those first couple of steps, we really feel that the most important step in any planning process is building a shared understanding of need. And that's where the process really needs to stop and pause. This is where we need to do consensus building in regards to what are the needs? What are the goals that we are trying to accomplish? Because once we move beyond this process, there's going to be a plethora of options to address those needs. But it becomes much more of an informed process if we all agree on what that need is. So, once we have agreed on that need, and again, this is where ECHMAC will play a large role in this process, the district can then begin to develop options once they're reasonably assured that a shared understanding of the need has been reached. One thing that was, has been interesting in regards to the process thus far is that the wonderful work that ECHMAC had done has identified the buildings that have the challenges and the needs based on the statistics that you studied. And you even took a little bit of a jump into starting to develop options. So then we, this summer, we'll be able, we were able to look at what are some of these options that the group recommended? But then it's, we all started to think about as we gathered more data and more data and more data, there might be some more options that need to be considered. And do the options only affect these four or five buildings that were included in the study? Or do we go beyond? So, at the very end of the planning process then, once some developed options have become available, and again, through that ECHMAC process, they'd all be rooted through those, then there becomes a recommendation that we can, that can be made from the options. And again, there's a very thorough process that we would take you through with all of that in regards to how to go through the pros and cons of your options. What are the most fiscally appropriate options to pursue? There's a lot of things to take into consideration in regards to schedule, timelines, transportations, neighborhood movement, all kinds of things when we start looking at options. So with that, last summer, we began our work by gathering additional data. And as Patricia discussed earlier, creating a shared understanding of capacity and how complex it can be, and it begins with good data. So what we did again was we sat down and we met with each of the buildings that were called out in the ECHMAC study to really understand what happens in each room, what labels being placed on each room, and gathering and interpreting that data.
I just wanted, before we move on to this next part, Linay will tell you a little bit about the interpretation and the additional data. But I want to reemphasize what she said. We had to step back because we had stepped a little bit too far into solutions before we had all of the information. And they've taught us a lot about that this summer. We were a little premature in stepping that far. And so now you'll learn a bit, a little bit about what we learned and why we're at the place where we are today.
And so with that, this is just calling out all of the site visits that we did. And this is part of that gathered data, that first box that I introduced in regards to industry standard practices, and it's really getting to know the facilities. So we did a deep study site visit with Basswood, Fernbrook, Garden City, Rush Creek, Maple Grove Senior High, Osseo Senior High, Park Center High. And then as we were gathering some of that data, it became very apparent that we needed to gather some additional data so that we could start connecting some of the dots and looking at how enrollment flows through the system and how each building is structured in regards to each individual community. So we also did take on a surface study for all four of the middle schools to understand capacity, to see if there were any challenges or opportunities there. And then we also have done a very, very light analysis for capacity at all of the remaining elementary schools in the district as well. And here's where we're thinking we need to do a little bit more of a deeper dive so that we've got consistent data for all of the buildings in the district. So another key piece to gathering the data is creating some elementary assumptions. This is a very, very important key piece to the foundation of planning for elementary schools. And this can lead to, this is, this leads to how we analyze the building and understand the capacity and understanding what district programming must be in a building so that we can understand and hold those boxes or those spaces for some of those programs. So I'd like to go through those with you. For example, the assumptions used for elementary target capacity analysis, in addition to the appropriate grade-level classrooms. So we're kind of setting those aside. We know we need kindergarten, we know we need first grade, second grade, third grade. All elementary schools need to have the following spaces. A cafeteria, a gymnasium, a media center, music rooms, technology labs, pre-kindergarten, pre-K, a staff break room, academic support services, special education, talent development, academic challenge and gifted, tag, English learner, EL, academic intervention, Title I. And then the key piece that we've learned also is that each building really needs two to three flex spaces to do with what they find appropriate to serve their individual community. Each of your schools has its own unique community and therefore offers different opportunities. And so those two to three flex spaces become very important in order for the success of those buildings.
So I think this is a really important place to pay attention because if we agree that these are the spaces that we want to have in a building in addition to grade-level classroom spaces, there are lots of implications. So if we think we don't need this many spaces, we could fit more students in a building. If we think we need more spaces than this set aside, we can fit fewer students in a building. So, as a result, if we land at this space and, or want to add additional students to a building by eliminating some of these spaces, we might not need to make a boundary change, or we might not need to add on to a building. So there's financial implications, and there's implications for our families. So we really have to be grounded as a group of leaders, as a group of community members, to be sure that we are prepared to support these assumptions that go into, that will ultimately lead to decisions for our school district. We spent several meetings with our Division of Leadership, Teaching, and Learning, a lot of the leaders in the program areas, working through some of these assumptions over the summer.
Elementary principals weighed in, they shared their perspectives. The visits to your schools, the schools over the summer informed, the ECHMAC visits informed the assumptions. But I agree, I think this is, these are really foundational concepts because they have financial and programmatic implications and can be adjusted. So if we want to adjust one of these assumptions, as Patricia said, we can increase capacity in a building or decrease capacity in a building by adjusting any of these assumptions. We're, we're going to, in a minute, we'll move forward and show you this calculation applied to a building so that you can get a sense for how the mathematical formula works when you calculate capacity. But again, we can change the capacity of a building, any building, at the elementary level. Secondary is calculated differently by changing these assumptions, which we can do. So I'm wondering if anybody has, any cabinet members or board members have questions about these assumptions? Is there anything that you're wondering about regarding the assumptions? One of the things you'll notice is, for example, administrative office is not listed as an assumption. A boiler room isn't listed as an assumption. So we are, we have on paper, I think, the assumptions that you could capture conceivably for classroom space so that some of the foundational structure of a building isn't noted here as an assumption. More classroom spaces. So is there anything you're wondering about?
Yeah, Dr. Maguire, we have on here that we're making the assumption that we're going to have pre-K at every school. Now I know that the state government has only given this district and a few others another couple of years of funding. And we just are spending a million dollars this year upgrading spaces on, in the, in the schools that do are offering it, mainly in lower socioeconomic schools, lower performing schools. So I'm wondering why we're making the assumption that there's going to be long-term funding available for this when it was a huge fight this year to actually get the remainder of the couple of years that we have? That seems to be, you know, we're making an assumption that it's going to cost us ten percent in space, or thereabout, and millions of dollars of upgrading those spaces. So why, why are we assuming that the graces of St. Paul are going to shine on us, you know, in a couple of years with millions of dollars?
That's a great question. In addition to the fact I'm an eternal optimist, I want to, I'm going to throw it to Brian too to talk about other four-year-old programming besides pre-K. So pre-K is just one kind of four-year-old programming. The, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian and Patricia, but the voluntary pre-K funding that we received is ongoing funding. It's not short-term funding. It's ongoing funding until the legislature makes a decision that it is eliminated for whatever reason.
To me, that means short-term. That means the next legislative session.
Yeah, you never know. You never know, right? But right now, it's in legislation. Schools who took the voluntary pre-K money receive it just as, in a formula, just as we do our other funding for kindergarten through twelfth-grade students, until such time as the legislature would be, would unallocate those dollars. The school districts that have those dollars have them as continuing dollars. So that's, that's part of why it's an assumption. Now, we should make a distinction between that funding and voluntary pre-K funding that was only short-term. Because in the last legislative session, the funding, there was some funding allocated at the end of the session that was only short-term, two years. And we only accessed that for one section to fill out a section at Birch Grove, I think. We didn't, we, Birch Grove, one, and...
A section at Edinburgh.
And a section, so we only have two sections. I wouldn't even say dependent on that, because if it goes away, we could cover it. The other school districts did, though, take advantage of that short, those short-term dollars. We really did not, very intentionally, because we don't want to be reliant on dollars that we know are going to go away for sure. And those new pre-K dollars are going to go away for districts that access those dollars. The dollars that we're accessing are ongoing funding until there will be legislative action to reverse it. We did have a conversation about that, Mike. We did, we also had a conversation about that when we recommended to the board the long-term facilities maintenance projects, which included some renovation of voluntary pre-K rooms for the summer. So we thought long and hard about whether or not we wanted to recommend the investment in facilities this summer even. One of the reasons that we made the recommendation of the board to move forward is because, and Brian will fill in here, we believe that even if the legislature were to reverse course for the state of Minnesota on the fully-funded voluntary pre-K, that we would have enough four-year-old programming through fee-based programs to fill up every slot we have in every school. That's the kind of demand that we're finding from our families. And Brian, what would you add to that?
Yeah, I would add a couple of things. So one of the things that gets a little bit convoluted is, pardon my voice, that sometimes folks utilize the funding stream to call it pre-K. So, you know, we have multiple delivery methods for pre-K in our school district, which Kate alluded to, a couple of them. One is funded through voluntary pre-K, which we thought was more likely to stick around, would be the way that I would also say it. The current iteration that was additional dollars was time-bound by how it was going to be funded. So we, we said that was more risky versus the other ones, would be the way I would say it. And then we also have some pre-K programs that get funded through Title I dollars at a few of our schools. And then we also have some of our fee-based programs that include sliding fee programs through EC and FE, school readiness dollars. And then we have some programs that also fit that tuition-based model, such as Four Star Program. People might be aware of that program. And we have a couple of our fee-based programs that have waiting lists to get into. And we also opened an additional section at Woodland this year where we went from one section to two because of demand. And at Basswood, we've had waiting lists for a couple of years now. We could fill another section of tuition-based tomorrow if we had a classroom to put it into. So I hope that gives a little broader snapshot of how people are accessing programming for four-year-olds. And I just wanted to make note that we have multiple ways and mechanisms that we have funded it. Even though folks often refer to them by the program name, that's really the way they're funded, but they're all pre-K programs.
I was just wondering, do you think there is any kind of a marketing advantage? You know, obviously, we want to capture as much of our community students as possible and bring them into our schools. Do you think there's a marketing advantage, or is that a stretch? If once you get people coming to the buildings, they want to keep their students in the building?
I might phone a friend on this question, but Christian, if you could just holler if I answer this correctly, or if you would want to adjust how I answer this. So we just finished our first year of voluntary pre-K. And I believe we had eighty-two percent, where Christian is?
Yes.
Oh, he's right behind me.
Eighty-two percent.
Eighty-two percent of our kids that attended voluntary pre-K continued on as kindergartners in our school system, right? Now, this is the first year, that, and that's only one data point. You know, I think we would need to figure out a way, if we wanted to do more study, on how many kids are participating in other types of pre-K who attend our school, which folks who choose not to attend our school district, if they were in any kind of pre-K before. I don't know if that's what you're getting at, Jim. So, but that would be my answer to saying, yes, there is a marketing value because the voluntary precares, in this last year, also was the first time we had four-year-old programming at all seventeen elementary schools. So the kids that were attending pre-K were able to attend at their home attendance school. Whereas in the past one, for instance, we maybe only had four-year-old programming happening at ten or eleven of the schools. Kids could still access it, but they might not have the opportunity to go to their home attendance school. So we also think, or I say, I think, that we're having an opportunity for folks to get in, get to the school that they're potentially going to get to go to for the next, you know, kindergarten through fifth grade. And we're retaining them at a, at a good rate in year one. It's only year one, that's pretty early to call it a pattern, in my opinion. That's just one year, right? That's just one year, right? But that's what happened after this first year.
And if I could add a note, if you don't mind, Brian?
Yeah.
We know from our own local and done by a professional research firm study that our families are choosing schools earlier than ever. The age just keeps going down, younger and younger and younger. Therefore, the more opportunities you have to engage them before they get to kindergarten, the better chances of engaging them in a way where they feel like they belong, they're cared for, they're getting what they need in our school system. And it's also generally known, Decision Resources, you may remember that firm, would generally say that once you, that you should expect strong retention rates once you engage young learners. They are more likely to stay with you, once they start with you.
Is it engaging the learners or engaging the parents? Because I think the parents are making the decisions for the kindergarteners.
Sure, let's say engaging the family.
Okay. You know, one of the things you mentioned, eighty-two percent retention rate, that's about the general retention rate we have as a district as a whole. So, you know, if it was ninety-five, I, I would say we have something. Eighty-two, I don't think there's any data there to support one way or the other, is it positive or negative? But again, we're, we're utilizing taxpayer funds to get into the private sector. We don't have a mandate for, for pre-K. You know, it, it's not mandated in some of those, well, for Four Star, we don't have a mandate for that. We are using taxpayer funds to build rooms, you know, that, that we get at subsidized cost. We are utilizing taxpayer funds, or, or, or we're utilizing the fact that we're not trying to make a profit so we can undercut the private sector. So we're competing with the private sector with, with lower prices, because we are nonprofit, and with funded buildings that they have to help pay for through their property taxes. So again, I'm gonna bring this up every time, we keep saying that we're gonna go and, and offer more services, more services that continue to compete with the private sector. Are we gonna start putting in full health clinics, mini-clinics in our buildings? Are we gonna go after, you know, what, what next? So I just wanna be very clear that our buildings are there for education at what we're mandated to do. All of these other things are nice to have, but when we're spending millions to build on, that's, that's not a need to have. It's a nice to have, and we wanna recognize that, that need, that nice to have is costing a lot of money. So I, I just wanna put that out there. Thanks.
I'd just like to ask for a couple definitions. I mean, at the elementary level, you pretty much know what a cafeteria is supposed to do and what a gymnasium is supposed to do. In terms of the elementary schools, what, how are we defining technology lab? And maybe to a little lesser extent, the media center? And the, and let me frame the question a little bit further, is in a digital age where we're pushing more and more technology into the mainstream classrooms, what do these two spaces really represent? Maybe not even today, but ten years, twenty years from now. If we're making an investment today, these buildings will be around for fifty years. So what, what do these spaces really look like in, in that frame?
Well, I think I'll start with a technology lab, because that one's kind of got a, a dual purpose today and a future purpose. When we plan new facilities today, we ask, how are you testing? Are you testing on computers? Are you testing on laptops? Are you able to do things wirelessly? Each state, Denver does it wirelessly, they have a little more flexibility here in the state of Minnesota. To my understanding, you still need to have that hardwired computer to actually do some testing.
That's a state requirement?
I believe so. Now, there's different requirements for different tests. And sometimes it's also just based on what you have available. I think you guys are running a couple of pilots at Basswood right now to do that on laptops.
Yep, I'm looking at Patrick.
Because they do not have technology labs anymore. So-
At Basswood.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we've got a large population of kiddos there. So with that being said, we did have some discussion, not only amongst your administrators, but with our partners and other peers in other districts. There's really a lot of dialogue in regards to keeping a technology lab so that there is a room that is dedicated and bolstered for technology. Because there's a cost that's associated that to hard, hardwire those rooms. And whether those stay as a traditional computer lab, or they become a robotics lab, or a maker's lab, or something that requires a CNC, or something that requires power and tools to actually create. So a maker's lab is where a lot of these technology labs are changing over. So what once was a formal testing lab now becomes something more, but the infrastructure is there. So to be determined, but as this group sat down and said, what do we wanna make sure we hang on to? We're still kind of in that limbo with testing. And we've got all of these lovely programs that are kicking off and becoming really robust that are technology-dependent. A media center, we asked about a media center. The trends in media centers right now are creating spaces where information is shared and exchanged in lieu of gathered. Books still have a huge impact on media centers themselves. But we are designing and we are experiencing these spaces becoming information exchange spaces. Where, where, I'll use this at an elementary school level, where students are creating their own videos. There are green screens, backdrops. They're doing a project on a zebra where they might read about the zebra, then they act out the zebra, then they go to the maker's space and make the zebra out of the Legos. And it's all cyclical, and there's a lot of neat things going on inside a media center proper. A lot of social space as well in regards to soft seating, collaboration spaces, and that can happen at all levels.
Some of it, I'm thinking about the elementary buildings where we have some of that physical furniture like that, that's changing now. I think Basswood's one of them, actually. You've got some soft spaces and meeting spaces for kids and space for production. And I know we have some other elementaries too that are starting to transition to collaborative spaces. I can't think which ones.
And a lot of flexible spacing, as well as having video conferencing. There's a lot that goes on in media centers, just not kinda like how we grew up. A lot happens there, a lot of children getting together for projects and for teaming and creations. TV, TV work, as she was mentioning, so.
You're, you're asking great questions. These are some of the questions we grapple, literally grappled with over the summer with elementary principals and building site visits and curriculum staff. You know, does every school need a media center? Because if you don't need a media center, you've just increased the capacity of your building, which then has financial implications, right? Or if you don't need space dedicated for four-year-old programming, you've just picked up space in your building that then has long-term fin, both programmatic and financial implications. That's why they merit really serious discussion, because it's not just financial implication. Well, act, you know, it's sort of a chicken and the egg. It could have enrollment implications, it could have programmatic implications, could have financial implications. That's why we really, we really grappled with them, and why we're pausing here to talk about this. Because the assumptions can be changed, which then change the capacities of your building. So we really, we really grappled.
I'm wondering if these assumptions are also true for our magnet schools? Or if they have different assumptions because they have more specific needs?
So we haven't studied your magnet schools in great lengths yet to understand them, as well as we do the, the buildings that were included in the initial study. That's why we're recommending today to, to pause and gather more information so that we can understand that, that implication a little bit better.
Can you just share a little bit more about the flex spaces and what schools use those for?
Can I answer?
Yes.
In regards to the flex spaces, it's kinda like the magnet schools. So every school, they all have kind of a focus that they have. So your flex spaces could be anything from an art classroom that you may have, not necessarily just Birch Grove. It could be a science classroom that they have. We have movement rooms, we have calming rooms. So every school has a different way that they could be using those flex rooms in their building.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, another way that a flex room can commonly be used is if enrollment changes unexpectedly. Children don't always come in packages of sections, as you know. So that gives us the capacity to add a section without taking away a technology lab or taking away a music room as, as enrollment spikes.
This may be an overly vague question, but how do these assumptions roll into, in the fine print, in addition to appropriate grade level classrooms? How are our assumptions reflective of some of the changing philosophies about appropriate classrooms? I, I think that we might be, over the long haul, drifting away from this idea of a neat orderly classroom with rows and columns of desks and moving towards more open spaces, more movement, more, more interaction, collaboration, kind of this open space where you move to the areas that you need to be to accommodate what you're working on at that moment. I don't know if that necessarily applies to elementary, but are, are we looking at, at those types of topics too? You know, or, or are we just kind of assuming that appropriate grade level classrooms are going to keep looking like what they've looked like for the last hundred years?
I think, I'm gonna start in, and then Lainey, what, what do you think? There's a distinction in language about, I think, when we use the word appropriate classrooms, it was about the number of grade level classrooms, which is, I think, distinctive from what does the box look like on the inside. So we have a number of classrooms that are, Palmer Lake is a great example, just 'cause I was there last week, where they're shifting to soft space and collaborative space in classrooms, as you know, just like what you're describing. And at an elementary school, this, our assumption was that at every elementary school, you gotta have a certain number of sections of third grade. You gotta have a certain number of sections of fourth grade. And, and they've got to have a space to, to accommodate them, whether it's twenty-five students or twenty-eight students, whatever that number is. Now, is that what, how, the distinction we were making when we said appropriate grade level spaces? It was about the number of those physical spaces?
Yep. In, in regards to a study like this, we're looking at how you're practicing today and trying to quantify and predict and project and create that baseline of how you're practicing today. Part of the AKMAC work and other recommendations did not say, all right, let's look at twenty-first century learning, and what are common practices for that? And what else are we missing in regards to some of the things that you had just mentioned? And some of that might come up as we continue this study. But again, any decision that you make in regards to taking a classroom offline to create an extended learning area, I'll use that word, for example, or a cluster of classrooms, you might have to take a classroom offline, that decreases your capacity. And so that's a big choice and a big discussion in regards to a district having in regards to if they are committed to that, because that will vastly change your capacity. But the solution that was just discussed in regards to, there are so many creative things that you can do within those four walls of that box to create those collaboration areas, invest in ergonomic furniture, create things that create movement and student choice within those boxes as well.
Okay. I, I, the main reason I ask is just because, as we look forward, are we going to inadvertently trap ourselves in an old model just based on space? It takes X amount of space to teach a row and column type classroom, whereas a more soft space, a collaborative space, might take twenty percent more space for the same amount of students, maybe twenty percent less. Maybe we don't need four separate boxes, four, four separate sections of third grade. Maybe they can be combined into two, because it's efficient enough to put them in a larger space, knock down a wall, and have the kids roam around. Maybe there's the same number of instructors in that space, but it's just a different way of looking at it. And I just hate to see us get necessarily pinned in when we have opportunities to reevaluate some of those, those decisions that were made a long time ago, when it was common knowledge that that's just the way it was done. And I think it's reasonable to say that people are questioning that now.
So we're gonna show you an example of Basswood.
Can I, can I ask a question about this? Because I wanna go back to the concept of assumptions and the significance of that decision-making. Now, I'm tonight thinking that if board members wanted to provide direction on adjusting assumptions, which they may want to do in the future, right? That that would not have to be done tonight, that we have an opportunity, we have some period of time anyway. Would that be true, would you say, Lainey and Patricia?
I would say probably within the next couple of weeks or the next month, because we're gonna really, we're, we're working on our next steps of understanding enrollment here in October. So, yes, there would be time.
So that would be important for us to decide, because if board members want to impact these assumptions, you know, how far down the road can we go with the next steps of work before we would need to know that from board members? So I think we, I just think we need to talk about that a little bit.
One of the assumptions that came up regarding Basswood, i- are, do we still have intra-district open enrollment there? And, and in any school, are we looking at the numbers of usage based upon a, a home school or homeschool and transfers in and out?
So district-wide, we still have intra-district open enrollment. Now, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, Basswood has been closed to open enrollment both outside of the district and intra-district for several years.
Four years.
Four years. But we do have intra-district open enrollment. So that's part of the enrollment projection process, which is, it sits alongside, but it's different than the capacity process. So what we wanna do is decide what's the capacity of Basswood. Then that will help us to make decisions about open enrollment and other things that we might need to do to affect the number of students that can ideally fit into the capacity available.
We can close buildings, and we do, because that's part of how you manage your enrollment. So we do close buildings to open enrollment. Yep.
Oh, it's just the Basswood one came up because we don't have tag spaces, we don't have a lot of other spaces, so.
That's coming next.
It's been an issue for a while.
You're moving ahead.
And I would, I would add one, um, comment. So, and I've only, this is only my seventh year here in the school district, but I would say we have a higher percentage of schools that are either completely closed or closed at grade levels than any of the years I've been here before. Right? And when we say a school is closed, that includes what we off, we refer to enrollment as some of our exemptions. So being closed includes, if you had a sibling who opened and enrolled previously, the younger child does not get into that school, they need to go to their home attendance area. That includes if your family had gotten in there before through needs for childcare. And that includes our third exemption, which is around student of a staff member, right? So when we say a place is closed, a hard closed, there's not, there's not exceptions to that. It's home attendance area only, so just a clarification. So I, my experience is we have, those numbers of grade levels that are closed or full schools that are closed are higher than any of the seven years I've been here.
I wanna go back for board members and ask a question about the assumptions, because this is so critical, as you can tell, for all the future calculations. So I, I haven't heard, Stephanie, is there anything that you wanna weigh in around the assumptions or anything you're wondering about? I heard Jim ask a question, Mike, Bob, me.
I think I'm good, I understand why a lot of these areas are needed in schools. Question I do have, though, is if we say we go ahead and we want to go through with all these assumptions, are you able to then not have one of those installed? For say, if you decide, I mean, like if I say I want all these and then all Basswood, for example, I mean, down here has the, no, the tag, like, can you take those out? I'm so sorry.
Yep.
I'm so sorry.
I thought maybe Randy was giving you the high sign over there, yeah. So what hap, is your question, like what happens?
So I'm just wondering, like, if I say, yep, I'm good with all these elementary assumptions, but down the road, I, a school doesn't need the tag, or doesn't need a technology lab. Are we able to make that decision?
Absolutely. So, for example, that's, that's kind of what's happening now with buildings, like with Basswood. Well, no tech lab, it's a kindergarten room now, three weeks before school started. And that would be true of any rooms where we're making an assumption for four-year-old programming. That would be true of that as well. So for example, tell me if I'm saying this accurately, Brian. If in future years, the legislature were to make a decision that the current funding that is allocated to school districts for programs were to be unallocated, that school districts no longer receive that allocation. We still have a classroom there, that room is designed as a classroom. Now, it might have its own restroom inside the classroom, but it is designed as a classroom and could be used for another kind of classroom. So it could be used for another kindergarten section or another, you know, younger grade level, first or second grade or something, right? So there's still classrooms that could be allocated to other sections of- So there's still classrooms that could be allocated to other sections of kids and might have to. So for example, we mentioned the flex rooms, so what about these flex room spaces? Well, if you have to, you're gonna lose the flex space if we have to put another section in your room, because you aren't just gonna do a boundary change or add in addition to a building. If you happen to have a bubble of kids coming through your building and all of a sudden you gotta have five instead of six sections, or six instead of five sections of a particular grade level, that isn't going to trigger that kind of action, that's a long-term action. We would trigger short-term action, we would close to open enrollment, we would, uh, take a flex room and use it as a classroom, for example, just like we're doing now.
I would just refer us back to the framework, which was set up for just that purpose, that changes and recommendations that would come out of ECHMAC are big time changes, like boundary changes, adding schools, making additions or closing a school. One of our guiding principles is that our observations and recommendations need to be sustainable, and that's just what that is meant to hold, that these are long-term kinds of implications, so we'd wanna determine whether that seemed like a permanent condition or not.
You know, there's actually, now that I'm thinking about it, as I look at the academic support services, now these obviously have been in place for a long period of time, but each, um, s- each have some allocations from either the state or federal level, special education, right? We get federal and state funding for special education, that could be changed any legislative session. We get funding, actually, we get a, uh, revenue stream dedicated to talented and gifted, that could be changed any legislative session. Same with English learner, our Title III dollars, or our academic intervention Title I dollars, now those are federal dollars. But technically, any given federal or state legislative session, those allocations could be shifted or could disappear. So we would really kind of face the same situation with some of those funding streams. If they go away, then there's got, there's, you know, obviously there'll have to be another way to serve students with, yeah, individual needs.
Just as a point of clarification, each of these has its own little bullet point, but then under academic support services, there's additional bullet points. Are those each separate rooms or are they combined rooms?
They're separate spaces and they would be designed into the capacity for a building based upon that, over time, that building's student need.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so board members, with the conversation and the questions that you've had so far, and knowing the significant implications of the assumptions, but also knowing that there are opportunities for using any one of these for a classroom, just like we do now, are you okay having us move forward to do the next steps with these particular assumptions in place? I think it sounds like that is a critical time question, uh, so that we can move forward with that.
I am.
I am, absolutely.
Yep.
I was just wondering, is there, when you talk about a cafeteria or a gymnasium, things of that nature, do you have, like, if you have X amount of kids and you need so much square footage, uh, do you have that kind of built in to the assumptions?
So, we know that they need just the space. Part of our study, um, if, as we're looking into, do we need to do additions on buildings or change a building at all based on an option for a solution? We know that the core areas of all of the buildings need to be taken close look at in regards to the number of toilets, the cafeteria, the media center, circulation, exiting, all of that comes hand in hand, um, with any type of modification. We have heard, and you'll hear, hear in a couple of slides, that, um, at your three buildings that are feeling some capacity pressure, the cafeteria's, their number one challenge is getting enough kids in and out in time and then packing them in there too. So, we do look at all of those spaces, there is not a, if it's an X of, uh, X amount of square footage building, it should be an X amount of square foot cafeteria, the MDE does have guidelines for that when you're building a new building. A lot of your buildings started with a core size and have been added on to quite a bit, therefore has exasperated the challenge a little bit in regards to the size of those cafeterias. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Actually, Jim, you bring up a good point, I mean, how many of these individual rooms, n- not just square footage wise in terms of a gymnasium or cafeteria, but how many of these rooms scale with the population of the school? I mean, if you have a large school, you might need two music rooms or four flex spaces, whereas a smaller school might only need two, just to be appropriate to their population ebb and flow.
And that's a great question, and that's where this discussion actually started in trying to quantify. Um, but as the population changes or enrollment changes at each building, we know that there's the FTE math that comes along with the number of students, and so this document here is meant to be, um, a placeholder saying, there shall be at least one space dedicated for these pieces. We know that in some buildings, there are going to be maybe four tech labs because it's a magnet, or there might be four EL rooms because of the need at that facility. The intent of this document is not to quantify those.
Okay, okay.
Great questions. Uh, Jim, I heard you ask a question last, and I think you got your question answered, so you're good, and Stephanie, I think I saw you say you're good, okay, thank you very much. Um, I appreciate that you spent a good amount of time asking questions, um, because the assumptions, as you can see, are really critical to the analysis that comes next.
So we'll show you an example, and I think you've already gone through the whole thing in your head probably, but here we go with gathering data, an example of elementary assumptions and how they apply to Basswood. And I do want to, um, share a disclaimer that we did most of our work in the spring. So when you are seeing some of our information, where we were bridging the gap between twenty sixteen, seventeen, twenty seventeen, eighteen, projecting a few things here and there, so with this being said, here's where we're at with what the building is being utilized or how the building is being utilized for twenty seventeen, eighteen. So you can see that in these list of assumptions, the black or the dark, um, letters, the dark words are what they still have available to use. The light gray is what they no longer have spaces for. And to be quite honest, some of these things that are actually in dark print are probably not in an appropriately sized classroom, um, because they're using whatever they have left over, um, to wiggle it in to get that program in. Um, and with a larger population, to your, um, question, Chair Gerhart, that, um, because of the population at this building, they're saying, we could really use, we've got two music rooms and a band room, we could really use that third music room, we've, we have to find a space to do that, so. Um, here's an example, and they just do not have any flex spaces at all to do any additional things that they would need to or want to do at that site. It's all used up by capacity, kids.
I just wanna add some more context around this, I spent some time with Patrick, um, today, just making sure, so you can understand the context around some of those spaces that aren't grade out. Um, this is a school that had two pre-kindergarten classroom spaces up until two years ago. So even though they still have pre-kindergarten, as Brian said, we could fill a waiting list immediately. They have one classroom only, they do have a staff lounge, but it also serves as their volunteer coordination center. This is a school that did have space because they have such an, um, active parent population that would perhaps use a flex space, um, to, for volunteers. They are sharing the staff lounge, um.
I just wanna clarify that we don't have staff lounges, our staff don't lounge. It's a staff break room, I just wanna be clear. I just wanna be clear.
It's a staff break room.
It's a staff break room.
Absolutely.
District two seventy-nine does not have staff at lounge, we do not.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire.
Thank you.
Can we advocate for?
Point of clarification, point of order.
And the other thing I wanna add, thank you very much for that clarification, that special education is not grade out, but there's only one special ed resource room at Basswood, and we still hold, um, district-wide, our district-wide connect program is in two classroom spaces at Basswood. So just to give you some more context, sort of beneath what you're seeing here.
I'll, can I toss one thing out to, to my fellow board members? Is to consider, this is just something popped up in my head, Dr. McGuire mentioned, you know, volunteer, or who hasn't mentioned that this was, the staff, uh,
Break.
Break room.
Break room.
Break room, yes.
Was being also used for, for volunteer purposes. I'm wondering if we would want to consider offline the idea of what kind of return on investment we'd get from adding to our assumptions a volunteer space? I mean, considering these are volunteers, what kind of money are we saving by having a good inviting functional space to have volunteers come in and do a lot of this work? I- i- if you wanted to think of it in terms of, you know, what do we get back from spending the money on a b- room that's dedicated for such a purpose? We might actually come out ahead on it, that's.
We can, we can. That can be something that we can look at as we take a deeper dive. Uh, what, what buildings have space right now and what, which buildings do not?
Mm-hmm.
The tech, could you technically use a flex space as?
Right, correct, correct.
Correct, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it's one of those space, yeah, it's, it, I mean, it's one of those spaces, it seems like it's there if it's available, but it's also one of the first to go. And what, what?
Something we always wanna utilize.
Right, what's the financial impact to us if we suddenly have to pay for services that we are getting volunteered right now?
Right.
Because it's a, it's a good space as opposed to, you know, something crammed into a corner and we just can't get volunteers to show up.
Nice, good quick question.
Yes.
I know, since, since we've got the map of Basswood up, or at least I do.
Yep.
Yes, you are.
I've always wondered, what was the, what was the big idea about having two big courtyard spaces? To me, it looks like a big hole in the building envelope that gives off heat in the winter and hard to cool in the summer.
I don't know, I think Dale would probably have, Dale's sitting in the audience here, why did we have courtyards in, even the newer model buildings?
Natural light.
Courtyard is a bane of my existence.
Yes, you heard it here, you heard it here, the bane of his.
Natural light.
Natural light, yeah.
Yeah, so inside classrooms have windows, right?
Yeah. So, but it's, it is interesting though, in our school district, that some of our very oldest buildings, Palmer Lake, uh, Birch Grove, does Birch Grove have a courtyard?
Elm Creek, Enciderland.
Elm Creek, yeah, so even some of our older buildings have courtyards, and so do some of the newest buildings, so, I don't know.
Sorry, Elm Creek, Enciderland, don't have one.
Yeah, some do. Natural light, you think, Dale?
We can't occupy it.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, we, we've explored, whether you can, you know, lift a portable in there, or, no, not really, but we have explored, can we build them in? Can we close them in for classrooms?
Yep.
And we cannot.
Why?
Why?
What did?
Yep, come on. Come on, Dale.
I, I asked why because my old high school, that's exactly what they did, they took the, the old courtyard and turned it into locker space.
We've looked at that at Basswood even because we thought, well, could we recoup some space, cause the footprint is not huge. So we looked at it and thought, well, uh, what would it cost to do that? And it would cost a lot of access, so you have to get hallways to get in there, and you would lose as much space getting to that space as you would a- adding to the outside of the building. And that would be the case probably at any of our buildings that have courtyards, because of the location, the structure wasn't designed for that, so we'd have to do all kinds of extraordinary, uh, foundation work and so forth, uh, with, you know, coming over the building and through the building, it would be, we just thought it was, uh, kinda ruled it off the table, so.
So we digress a little bit into options, but it was an interesting question.
It was, yeah.
So let's, um, so we, we heard one thing on the table about, wow, what about parent volunteer rooms or guardian volunteer rooms? So we'll add that to our list.
Touch on that real quick? I went to a school once that it wasn't a courtyard situation, I don't know what it was, I can't remember exactly, but they actually had a s- larger center space that was like risers going down.
It's a amphitheater.
And all the classes for that grade level were around it, and so they would go into it for, like, music or, like, like, large group. Learning. Science outdoor classroom, you can have gardens. Yeah, it was really, it was just, I don't know, just an idea that we could maybe still use the space, just not as a classroom.
Uh, let's see here, so Basswood, we're, we're applying the capacity analysis now with these assumptions to Basswood, so you can see mathematically, how does it work at an elementary, we're using Basswood, cause that was a deep dive building this summer, but this is the kind of analysis we would apply to every building as we get to a deep dive on each of them.
So what we're looking at in this slide is the twenty seventeen, eighteen utilization of this building, which ties to the capacity. So, uh, what we're showing here is that Basswood currently has up to eight sections at some grade levels at our kindergarten, and in order to apply the assumptions and provide a sufficient, sufficient number of grade level classrooms, Basswood would need to become a five-section school at each grade level. So let me say that again, right now, the drawing that you're looking at, where you see the dots, those are grade level classrooms. And I'll walk you through the math on the chart there too. So for each grade level, we've got the number of sections, I'm moving left to right on that col- in the column there. You can see all of the different sections, we've taken the district average class size and multiplied that out to get to a student capacity at this building for one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven students. So you think, okay, well, if we've got a capacity of one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven and we've got about a thousand kiddos there, we're good. Well, as we've just shown you, you can got a, you've got space for kiddos, but now you've really let go of a lot of your assumptions. And so you're not running the type of model that we've just agreed to in order to make this an efficient model for an elementary school. So, um, that's really important to understand, and this is probably the best example of that, to show you how you've put more kids in and you've taken some things away to have seats for those kiddos. Uh, the next slide, I think we'll move on to, is, um, I'd like to share a little bit about secondary. So that's just a very simple math, Cliff Notes version of how we do capacity at an elementary school level. Um, at the secondary level, it's different, because we've got kiddos moving through the building, and we've got schedules that are imperfect. So, for example, um, in the elementary school, students aren't homerooms for much of the day, in the secondary school, students move from room to room. So I'm sharing an example here of, um, Maple Grove Senior High School, we'll switch to the next slide there. And I'll share a little bit of how we calculate the math here. So we went through each and every room with your principal to understand what the primary subject matter is taught in each space. So even if you see something that might say science or math, and it's a seven-section, um, type of a building, there might be six sections of math and one section of language arts, we just took the primary topic of what was taught in that room. So then we apply the dots again to the rooms that house the kiddos primarily throughout the day, and I know the math there is probably difficult for you to read. But then we extrapolate all of that information out in regards to the target average class size at the high school is thirty-three kids per room, where there's a dot. And so that helps us calculate for twenty seventeen, eighteen, we've got eighty-eight boxes or dots times thirty-three kiddos, which is your average class size. You've got, um, two thousand nine hundred and four seats for kids. Now, that sounds great, that sounds like a hefty number, right? But we also haven't, have to understand that this building isn't used at a hundred percent, because not all of the seats are filled every hour of the day. So industry standard says to throw an eighty percent utilization rate at these buildings, which brings that number down to two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven. So, we know that your projected enrollment from this spring, we are gonna be re- relooking at, um, ECHMAC will be looking at projection, um, enrollments again, but based on those numbers with the capacity today of two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven students, the projected enrollment coming this way is two thousand four hundred and seven. So, we're going to be over capacity pretty darn quick at this building. Not to mention that when we met with the principal, um, there were a lot of things there that were discovered in regards to, in order to, in the same situation as Basswood, in order to get these kids into the building, we've had to make some sacrifices. For example, all of the technology labs are now standard classrooms, and the media center at this building is filled with all of those computers from those technology classes. So herein lies some discussion, and do we believe in having a media center at the high school? If we believe in having a media center, we need to find a new home for those computers and replace those computer labs. So herein lies the next phase of the. So herein lies the next phase of the study. What are we already deficient today that we need to fix? And then what projected growth is coming our way so that we don't miss the mark there? And we also know at this building that our cafeteria is also very tight too, so that needs some further investigation as well. And I'm sure there's a lot more, but for the study this summer, it was just basic capacity enrollment.
Linnae, I have a question, I'm looking at this slide and I'm reading example of elementary capacity analysis at Maple Grove Senior High. Is, was elementary an inadvertent word from the slide before at Basswood or do we mean basic? I just think it's important to clarify. Yeah, I think we were supposed to take that off. And, um, Patricia, I'm wondering if you would mind, um, taking it off for tomorrow so that we can repost this.
Yep.
Uh, tomorrow, this presentation with, uh, Patricia's speaking notes will be posted, so we'll just, I just want to note that we'll correct that slide, that word, so that it, it's, we don't mean a basic application of capacity analysis. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? So I'm just giving you one example of an elementary and then a secondary. But we went through and looked at middle schools also and we're going to give you a summary of those here coming up in a couple slides. So this piece of information here is some preliminary elementary capacity data. And I think what's important to take away from this slide is that if you look at Basswood, we know that the projected, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two enrollment is one thousand fifty-eight. The twenty seventeen eighteen capacity based on the current usage is one thousand one hundred and fifty-seven. So herein lie again, again, if you look at the numbers, it looks like we're just fine. Um, Fernbrook, we're pretty close, Rush Creek, we're pretty close. Um, but in order to jump to a fix for Basswood, if there needs to be a fix to get back to those assumptions, we have to decide how many, um, how many cohorts or what are we gonna do for number of sections per grade level? So when you're looking at that fourth column there that says capacity corrected for assumptions, because Basswood, Fernbrook and Rush Creek are all sister schools, there's an assumption in this table that takes them all the way down to five-section schools. To be able to get the assumptions accomplished within the footprint of the building. That's one of many options that can happen at those sites. Depending on how big the district wants those buildings to be, how quick of a solution we need to get to, how, um, how, how far do we want to go with boundary changes? All of the above. And it could be a combination thereof.
Did you say the class size was?
Um, the aver- it would be a five-section building, so five kindergarten, five first, five second. I keep forgetting this. Sorry.
And, and at Basswood, that would mean there's eleven sections as we speak, uh, over. So we would have to take out twen- let's say twenty-five students times eleven is two hundred and seventy, uh, two hundred and seventy-five. You'd have to remove that many from Basswood to, to meet the five, yeah.
Because some of those sections are larger than two and five.
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Yeah, if in the end, that was the option that was chosen by the board, right? So there's always an option to do nothing and accept current reality or there's an assumption, you know, so there, eventually, that could potentially be an option.
I'm, I'm just putting it into student terms so that the parents out there listening here, that what, you know, what we're, we're looking at here.
Yeah.
As one option, it's not just eleven sections, it's two hundred and seventy-five students and probably two hundred and fifty families.
And there's also the, you know, think about the options we thought about from the enrollment capacity management task force and advisory committee. It's adding on to a school, build a new school, move students through a boundary change, or as Dr. McQuire said, do nothing.
Mm-hmm.
So there's, all of those options are available to us.
And then we should also point out Garden City as well was part of the study and so you can see that their projected and student enrollment is three hundred and forty. Based on their current usage, they're at three ninety-three, but they are also deficient, some of those assumptions, and so we would need to correct that. As well. I think I've got a little bit of a summary here for the, um, senior high schools also. Um, you can see that Maple Grove Senior High projected enrollment twenty-one, twenty-two would be twenty-four hundred. Their student capacity based on the current usage of the building is twenty-three, twenty-three, we know there's some challenges with that. And then we have not gotten to the part, gotten to the point in the study yet for correcting any capacity or assumptions because assumptions will be completely different for high schools. And then at Oseo, you can see that your enrollment's at twenty-two fifty-three. Um, the student capacity is at twenty-four eighty-two. And then at Park Center, you're at twenty-one fifty-one, capacity's at twenty-three seventy-six. And again, this is all just based on numbers, there's a lot of gray area here in regards to how you offer your programming, how you use compensatory dollars to buy down your classroom sizes, there are all kinds of other things that need to be discussed. Um, you know, when you're looking at these numbers.
So if these were the schools that we had asked Wold, because they were the ones that were surfaced, that we had asked them to take a deeper dive into, there was some cursory work, some beginning work done at all of the schools. We'll want to step back, gather a lot more data about that, so we can get a more comprehensive look at the district.
So I think you just covered that one.
I just think we've, yeah, so we're gonna be back gathering data this year, um, completing more of that work.
And I think this is where we're gonna have rely on ECMAC to really help us with the ga- the, the data that we gather and say, here's how we're interpreting it, um, how would you interpret it, what does this mean to you? Um, and so that will probably be a lot of the heavy lifting through this cycle here this winter.
And these next three slides will show you how we've interpreted the data we know about.
So here's some preliminary in, um, interpretations for the elementary schools. That, and you've probably learned this already, so here's a recap. Uh, Basswood, Fernbrook, Garden City and Rush Creek are projected to be at or above available ca- capacity by twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, um, under current projections. Again, we're gonna get some new projections that we're gonna plug into the system to see if that changes. But with what we know now, that's the statement. Basswood and Garden City are currently utilizing special or support spaces as grade level classrooms, meaning flex rooms or the assumption rooms. And they are operating a deficiency of these spaces per the elementary assumptions for target capacity analysis. So Fernbrook and Rush Creek are kind of looking okay right now, it's the other two that are really missing some of those assumption spaces. Basswood, Fernbrook and Rush Creek have cafeterias that are stressed for cafeteria seating capacity and building circulation. So because those buildings have been added on to and that core cafeteria was built probably for a lesser capacity, there's some challenges there. Unquantified future district housing growth beyond twenty twenty-one, twenty-two will put additional capacity stress on the Fernbrook Elementary area. So that's just something that we want to capture, that we think is coming our way or we want to monitor it and we don't want to forget about that as we are planning over the next year or two here. Uh, for the middle level, again, we just did a very high-level analysis, we did not meet with the middle school principals in great depth um, in regard, in regards to touring buildings, but we did get a better understanding of their floor plans and their capacity. So with that being said, Maple Grove Middle appears close, but not expected to exceed its maximum capacity at current enrollment projections. So it's close, we're gonna keep a close eye on that, if those numbers change, we might have a different statement here in a couple weeks. Circulation challenges, um, in common areas at that building as well. Other middle schools have sufficient capacity under current enrollment projections. Unquantified future housing growth is not expected to impact the middle school enrollment until after twenty-one, twenty-two. That being said, your growth is gonna hit your elementary schools first, but we have to start tracking any bubbles that come our way because then you, you may be tight here at your middle school levels. And the senior high, um, Maple Grove Senior High is currently at capacity and expected to be over capacity by twenty twenty-one, twenty-two under the current projections. Capacity at the other senior high schools appear to be, uh, near capacity and could possibly be over capacity under current projections, but again, we just need to watch those closely. Circulation challenges in common areas at all comprehensive senior high schools is something that we need to watch and that we've heard about through these studies so far.
I just want to take a short pause there, just to see board members, if you have any questions about just the, uh, meaning that we're taking in a preliminary fashion from, from that capacity study. And if you don't have questions, we'll just move on to the next steps, but I want to make sure you have a chance to have any questions answered that you might have.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Nothing else?
Okay, all right.
So here's how we're beginning to see next steps might lay out. You can just visually notice that we need to stay back and gather more data and spend time interpreting the data based on the assumptions and, um, the other pieces of information we learn. So here's what we think we're gonna be doing in the next couple of weeks and months. We're gonna update our enrollment projections using this fall's data and we're gonna consider any breaks in our normal pattern that are showing up. Are those here for the long term or are they just a one-year anomaly? And then we are going to, um, oh, we also want to, as Linnae said, we need to begin to incorporate perhaps in the fourth and fifth year, some of that unquantified growth. In Northwest Maple Grove, we have spent a lot of time with our partners at the city of Maple Grove, um, trying to understand when that growth is expected. And so we'll want to start building that into projections so we can make some meaningful assumptions about that. We will, oh.
What, what about Corcoran? I mean, right now, it seems to be all the growth is to the west side of one oh one, which is Corcoran. And there's significant, much faster than I ever thought that would start building out.
Yeah, we have some growth coming out of Dayton, yeah, Rogers, yes, absolutely. Uh, all of our communities that, um, we have, um, students in, of course. Thank you for that. And what, we're gonna update and complete our building utilization and capacity data with, um, our partner Wold Architects and Engineers for all of our buildings in the district. I want to just say that we're also going to bring in, we have demographers that we work with to help us apply statewide and other localized information that we might have that can help us. That, we had a demography partner come and visit with us last week at the city of Maple Grove to make sure we were hearing everything that a more sophisticated lens might grab. And we complete, we will work with the city staff, we work with the housing developers, so, um, development companies, I'll, I'll either reach out to them or they're often, often reaching out to us to try to help understand if we build here, which elementary school are we in? So we're trying to reach out as best we can about who's buying property to try to get a sense for, are you targeting seniors? Or are you targeting, you know, families, families, um, in your housing? So we'll spend a lot of time studying that and, um, just realtors in general, not only, um, developers, but just our real estate, um, community to understand what's happening with even housing turnover. And so ECMAC will get all of that data, as is our process, and help us to, um, begin to create new observations. And this is what I think we're gonna start to see. We're gonna spend some time with ECMAC between October and December, looking at some new data. And I'm expecting that by about February or March, we'll be at a position to come back to the board and say, here's the next set of data we have, here's the next set of interpretations to get a new, um, to get some input and direction from the board, perhaps about February or March. And then we'll come back and perhaps by that time, we'll be at a place to say, we've got everything we need. Now we need to figure out what's the need and let's get a shared understanding of the need. And that, as Linnae has said, will be an important starting, uh, stopping point. We shouldn't go on beyond that until we're sure we have a really good shared understanding of need. And so we'll be spending some time, um, then after we get input from the board in February or March, we'll spend the latter part of the year with ECMAC, building that shared understanding of need and expect that by the end of the year, we'll be back by May or June with that information for the board. And I think it's reasonable, if we can get to that place by the end of this school year, that we might be at the point next summer to begin to develop some options. But until we're sure where we're at, um, in creating that build understand, um, shared understanding of need, I'm just not sure. So at, at this time, I expect by next summer, we might be moving into option development.
Uh, board members, one of the questions that we had as we closed the presentation is whether or not there's anything else that you think would be helpful to you as we work towards building a shared understanding of the need?
I don't know if it's anything that would help me, but I'm wondering, Brian, your statement that said you had waiting lists for pre-K, are you guys able to capture if those students are coming to our school, even if they don't ever get in?
I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to do more research on that to find out. I also made a note based on, uh, Mike's question or statement around retention. You know, what are the retention rates by site? And our VPK is, uh, our schools that have higher mobility rates? So I'm wondering if VPK at schools that, I don't know that, that's just a wondering, right? When, every time someone asks a question, you know, it seems like you jot down another note to say, what might I want to look at? The other, so I don't know that answer Stephanie, but, uh, that would be one I would look at. And I even, just from being on the first ECMAC group, I would say one thing that, about the model that I think is interesting that popped in my brain while we were talking, if I wouldn't mind sharing it. There are now assumptions built into the assumptions. Because not so far ago in the distant past, we didn't have full day K at all of our sites. And that was only five years ago.
Right.
Right, so, um, even, uh, like you said, re- always read the fine print, right? So there were assumptions on grade levels, which now, from my perspective, would be an assumption at grade levels is that K through five are all, all day. And, uh, not all of our pre-Ks are all day, by the way, some of our pre-Ks are partial, partial day or partial week, so. I just want, since Stephanie asked me a question, I thought I'd also throw in a statement.
Jim?
I had another question about, um, about, I guess, to be honest, it's about Basswood and customer satisfaction. I mean, when we talk about a, I don't want you to necessarily call out a specific site, but that seems to be the one where we've got a lot of tension. I would, I'm just guessing that there would be if you've got all that, you know, we're at a capacity already. Uh, we've, we're repurposing rooms already, you know, we're doing the best we can in that space with what we have. Are we seeing some customer dissatisfaction? Are we seeing stress in the building? Are there, are we underserving, um, this community as well as, you know, others that, like Garden City has some, has some projected issue, uh, needs in the future? I guess, do you know what I'm trying to say?
It's spiritual issues?
Yeah.
Because people are just physically bumping into each other, maybe? It couldn't, it couldn't.
I, I guess that was kind of part of my question to Brian, like, are we losing students because we have such a long waitlist? Are we losing families?
Right. Underserving them.
Yeah.
Uh, Jim, I don't know if any of us are prepared to answer your question about implications of customer service or the student or the parent experience at Basswood. Uh, you know, uh, probably the parents or Patrick would be best informed and were, they wouldn't be prepared to share that tonight. But what yours, but at least Patrick wouldn't, I can't speak for parents, but, uh, I, what you're, what you're moving towards is implications of the current reality experience.
Right.
So as we move into options, because an option is always to do nothing, uh, we would just examine implications of every option that's on the table. So the student experience or the customer service experience of families would be part of probably we, what we would want to talk about and get information about as we look at options for Basswood, if an option is to do nothing, for example. So that's exactly the kind of thing that we would want to surface. In the meantime, I'd like to go on record as saying that the administration at Basswood is doing a bang-up job. And, uh,
I have heard wonders of things.
Run a great program. And I believe that families and students who attend there love Basswood, which is why there'll be consternation, right? And, and our families love our schools. And so when you have to move families, it's, uh, that's, that's what creates angst and sadness and consternation.
It's also the second highest performing school in the district. And if you start removing, there will be issues that happened at other school closings when you took away a home school from people. So that, that has to be in consideration for loss of, uh, loss of students.
Yep, there's implications to, to every option. And that's, that's exactly what we'll have to draw out and gather information about.
Right, if they don't have a tag area, they don't have flex spaces or a tech lab or these things. You'd think that would have some customer satisfaction impact or experience impact.
Are there other things, board members, that you are thinking about that would be helpful as we build a shared understanding of that need? And we, and if you think of something after tonight, we can always add it on so that we have some time.
I guess a question or wondering that I have is assumptions for our secondary schools. When I know that we've had lots of conversations about the curriculums that we're implementing at our schools. I just see just the basics and we're at the brim. So have we considered any of that already in our assumptions? Or do we need to consider those types of things like specialized education for specific programming? You know, we're talking about OEC, not OEC, OEC?
At OSU C D.
Yes, thank you, sorry. And we had talked about different tech ed classes and things like that. So I guess I'm wondering, have we already considered that or do we need to have that conversation?
I would say a little of both. And what would you add, Linay? We had, for instance, Godfreyetta Ferrari was, and other curriculum coordinators were in especially our elementary assumption conversations. So that we could talk about programming and what does it look like now and what could it look like in the future? Like, what would you add to that? I'd say there's more conversation to be had.
Yeah, I think we've had two. We've had the roundtable discussion with your administrators and then when we did the site visits, we walked through the building and we said, you know, I asked the questions in regards to what programs are popular right now? What programs are going through curriculum review? What, what does the future of this program look like? You know, so it wasn't an exact science, but as we get into that, and I, I think we're going to find that the assumptions are different for each school. Cause you have some amazingly different programs at each of those sites. So we're going to have to look at them through a different lens or differently. Elementary schools, you can kind of do it all at one time, but the middle schools and high schools will have to look at them independently.
Okay.
I have a comment and brought it up the last time when, when we didn't want to look at certain schools. But Weaver Lake has about, what, six hundred students? And, and none of, or maybe two hundred and fifty of them are from that area. So what we did is we took out three hundred and fifty student classroom, you know, we took out fifteen classrooms out of the west side of the district. So those eleven classrooms could be redistributed to students at schools that are at or above capacity. By moving the students that we relate back to home schools. Now, I know that's not a popular decision because of it is a STEM school, but it could be a twenty million dollar less decision if we're looking at building. So I, I just want to put that out there, that there are significant assumption that we've left off the table. Which is moving Weaver back to a community school in that part of the district where we are over or at capacity on all of the schools. So that, that's something that we're not talking about. It was a decision not to talk about it, but it's a, a school's thirty-five million bucks. It's sitting there. We have under capacity at other schools, but we're, we're not, we're not searching that because still, don't know why. Twenty, twenty-five million, thirty-five, thirty-five million dollar decision that we're using in our assumptions at this point. And I, I think we need to open that up.
Mike, you're right, that wasn't a recommendation for study and I would want, I don't intend to make that as a recommendation. I would want direction from the school board or a majority of the school board members to do anything with Weaver. So I, I appreciate that you have a perspective, Mike, on, and you're wondering about, I think, I think you're wondering about what would happen if you took all the students out of Weaver Lake Elementary? And you put them back into their home attendance area. So the ma, the majority of those students are District two seventy-nine students.
Right.
But it's a non-attendance area school right now, like Birch Grove, so it's a complete one hundred percent choice school.
I, I'm guessing about two hundred and fifty would go into schools currently under Fernbrook, Bassley, Basswood, Rush Creek, et cetera, Rice. And about three fifty would go to other schools. But it's the schools that I just mentioned that are at or over capacity. So, you know, that three hundred and fifty that would go to other schools, open up the opportunity for the schools that are nearby to not have to build. To not have to make significant changes. So maybe some boundary changes back to where they were, but not having to build. Build costs money, lots and lots of money. And I just want to put that out there before we start making decisions that we're, we're, we are not taking that into consideration at this point. I'm concerned about that. Yes, the board has to vote on that and we do have to have a serious discussion about that, but I'm just bringing it up there.
Board members, are there any other questions that you have that would help us build a shared understanding of need that you'd like us, that you're wondering about? Okay, Mr. Chair, I would like to note, please, on the agenda. It is precisely eight o'clock. And so now it is totally on you as to whether or not we stay on time for the rest of the agenda.
No pressure or anything.
For the record and on video.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. As we transition, seriously though, as we transition Patricia and Linay, I want to thank you. We have both EGMAC members in the, in the audience. And we have team members, staff members over here who have been really intimately involved in the facility capacity study during the summer. And Patricia and Linay have just done really, really amazing work. And as, I think the historian are on the table, although Kim Reese Craft, you're right up there with me. Really and truly, in my thirty-three years in the school district, this is the best capacity analysis study that we've done and I've been through. I believe this is my third, if not my fourth, facility study in the school district in the last twenty years at least. So I really appreciate the work that you've done and I know it is not easy. And the decisions aren't easy. So I just want you to know, we appreciate your work, so thank you for your preparation for tonight.
I, I think it's a real, a real testament to the dedication and passion of the people that are involved to see that they're not just putting in the time in these, in the EGMAC meetings, which is significant, but to take additional time out of their night to sit passively in, in the audience where it's not even fun, where you're being active in the group, but to sit and try to watch to make sure that the fruits of their labor are coming forward. So I, I think that's a kudos to all of you for, for showing up.
Passive might be your key word, because there aren't too many passive people on there.
This is, this is your one night off.
It is, this is, this is, and many of the participants on EGMAC know, this is unlike anything we've done around building capacity and enrollment, right? We used to do business one way and now we do business another way. And the engagement of our staff members and the engagement of our community members help us figure out how to do it better, so.
I want to say that this, like a lot of things, the school district does things really well. And I think it's because we have a board and superintendent that are, that are invested in strategic priority work and held this as a priority. That gave me a way to say, staff, I need you to come along with me. And gave me a way to invite community along for the long haul. That is really hard work, but it me, but it requires support from the school board and the superintendent and that strategic priority work, it works.
Yep, yeah, thanks Patricia. Alright, Mr. Chair, it's all yours now.
Okay, it's all mine now?
Yep.
Well, like we started introducing a couple sessions ago, I wanted to add a little bit of time here, hopefully not more than, you know, fifteen minutes or so. Just for the board to have kind of an open forum, general discussion of.
You have forty-five minutes on that.
Well, I was allotted fifteen originally and in the spirit of fine facilitation tonight, you know, we want to keep that on track.
And there goes a minute.
Stephanie.
Thirty seconds.
So with that, this gives us an opportunity just to be able to discuss in an open meeting, anything that the board would like to discuss among each other, new ideas, different directions that don't necessarily come up on our regular agenda. So if anybody has anything that they'd like to bring up, this is the time to say it, otherwise, you know, I can fill fifteen minutes, trust me. Looking around, looking around, any takers?
I don't know if this is the right time to, to talk about progress that we've made on our assignments from last week regarding looking into a, a process for a new superintendent search. If, if this is a, a time to that.
I, I guess I wasn't planning on doing superintendent search, but I mean, we can definitely discuss that for a couple minutes, we're, we're still in open meetings, so.
You know, just everybody, you know, from last week, we made a decision to, you know, we started to break up all of the recent districts around here who have had recent searches. We've been assigned everybody to go out and start talking to them. So, you know, that becomes an issue of getting a better understanding. So as a board, we are working towards that end of, of starting that process, so. I know I've talked to a couple and, and, you know, I don't know what progress is, but it's hard to get a hold of some people sometimes, but that's, that's the process we're going down right now.
And I've reached out to the two that were on my list. I've somewhat heard back from one, I don't have answers to our questions yet. I haven't heard back at all from other contacts, so that's, that's where I'm at right now on my two. I don't know if anybody else has managed to make any progress on theirs. It's, it's pretty early in the process too, so we've still got some time.
It's early, yeah.
Anybody else have random topics of discussion that they want to bring up? Well, I'll, I'll take what Mike was saying and segue into something then. When I was going out trying to make my contacts with these other school districts, I found that their websites aren't too different than ours. Their methods of contacting their school boards aren't too different than ours, which in my opinion isn't necessarily a compliment. I think that when I've looked at other, other, now that I've been in the position of being in a need to go out and reach other boards. And finding that's not always the most straightforward thing to do, to be able to identify people or get their contact information or things like that. And then kind of looking back on ourselves going, wow, we're, we're kind of in that same position. I was wondering if there'd be any interest in the name of transparency to try to at least change that for ourselves going forward. I think that, you know, this board, any board should be more visible, more accessible, more transparent to the, to the people it serves. And I was just wondering if there's any feelings about this board being a little bit more proactive about the communications about who's on the board? What do we do? Who are, who are the actual people that are on the camera, you know, once a month and, and talking about these things? How can we be better about as a unit, getting out into the community and actually, you know, meeting with people? We're waiting for people to kind of come to us to contact us. I think the, the chance for contact could be better. I think the, the one-way ask of people coming to us is a little bit out of balance. So I'm looking at ways of, of moving us out into the community, make us more accessible to the community, whether that's updating things on the website. You know, individual bios, things like that, better contact information, background information. This is a topic I was going to talk about before and I kind of intentionally waited until the summer passed, but the idea of, you know, the local parades, to be able to get out and circulate where these, these, these big community events. City councils are there, people like that that represent the community are there, but were not there. That question came up in the past and there wasn't really, you know, strong support for it, but this is a new board, so it's probably worth, worth asking the question again. So these are general things that I was just wondering if anybody wanted to discuss, if anybody has any strong feelings one way for or against?
There, there's a couple of different things you brought up there, Chair Gerhart. One was, you know, participating as two seventy-nine within, you know, the community parades or the community functions. And as a marketing piece, I, I think that's great. You know, there's not an opportunity to discuss things, but to get the local schools out. And, and I don't know if some of the local schools do that or not, but to have a unit in the parades from the multiple different schools that are in that city, that locality. Something like that, I think would be great, help, help to build that type of community support and community identification with the local schools.
As long as we're not discussing anything, that's okay, if we're all participating, correct?
Sorry about that.
So like if we're walking in a parade together as a school board for District two seventy-nine, we can all do that together.
I, I would imagine that that would be true. Obviously, we wouldn't want to discuss business and make decisions in a parade.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just at, I want it, I want it to be legal, I want to get, consult the legal person.
Some of us have a hard time walking and talking at the same time, so I don't know if that would be an issue.
You have to know, like, we have to.
I'm, I was joking.
Oh, okay, I was being serious.
No, I, I've alr, go ahead.
I'll just, it, it would seem to be more, it might be more useful if there was an opportunity for interaction. For example, if a school's having a bingo night, maybe we rotate and you pull, say, okay, I'm going to go to Garden City's bingo night and I'm going to sit at a table there. Somebody can come up and talk to me, ask me questions, challenge me on something. It, that, then that is an opportunity for one-to-one dialogue. As opposed to they have to come here and then stand up there and talk in front of everybody. They could unload, I mean, discuss whatever they like, one-to-one. I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to do things like that. I think that might help.
I think it's a great idea. I wouldn't mind putting like a bio on the website and just introducing who I am.
Okay, so it, it sounds like this is at least worth continuing the discussion. And that's really what this time was meant to be, was time to see if it's, something's worth discussing, then we can move it into discussions behind the scenes if it's appropriate or to work session topics or things like that.
Yeah, I mean, there's many times I would love to attend activities, but like during the day I can't. So like bingo nights would be awesome or any family events that are being held at schools in the evenings would be wonderful.
We get invited to a lot of daytime stuff that.
Yeah.
And, and there's a lot of stuff we don't hear about, you know, that, that would probably be very appropriate to attend. I mean, I try to, to sign up on all the Facebook pages of all the schools to see what's going on, but there's still events that aren't publicized there that come out through other means. I'm like, oh, I missed that because I didn't know about it. So, you know, better communication from each site, you know, you coordinate it through somehow would be very helpful just to let us know what's going on and, and where we could attend if, you know, if possible. And I've tried to do that as, as much as possible. And I've started to reach out to, to some of the elementaries on, you know, do they have a parent meetings in the morning? Do coffee with a board member, but different ways to get that. There's also the, the thought that I've mentioned in the past. Can we take meetings like these, not this because we have the camera, but any work sessions into different communities, into different schools? You know, that would be one way of getting closer to people. I know we have an issue with videotaping board meetings, so we couldn't necessarily do that, but we're doing at least one, if not more, work sessions. And, and I think probably as we go more and more into the superintendent search, that having those meetings and having the input in each of the different district, the schools, the, the different cities, the communities. I think that'd be very appropriate to, to get out of here and into the communities.
Well, I'll, I'll ask the, the local historians, wasn't that done in the not-too-distant past? Where there would be meetings that would circulate around different locations?
I would say the distant past.
Distant past?
Yeah, that would be late nineties, early.
Before video, you know, before.
Okay.
Early two thousands.
We centralized them here actually, partly for transparency purposes. Again, it was before my time as superintendent, obviously, but Barb, you weren't here then, but were they work sessions? No, they were actual meetings.
They were regular board meetings.
Yeah, there were actual.
Like two thousand two, two thousand three, that's about when it ended.
Okay.
Yeah, I think in the, in the nineties, when I was a principal, I remember during the nineties, there were actual board meetings that would rotate around. Board members would have a little tour of a building and then they'd have an actual meeting. I don't know that they increased participation or communication. And now we videotape, now we livestream, so you can't do that from a building. I don't remember work sessions being at buildings at all. I don't remember work sessions period in the nineties, frankly, but I do remember regular board meetings being in buildings.
Well, our perspectives might have been different, we had different goals then.
That could be, I wasn't paying attention to board work sessions.
I, I did ask a, a while ago about Granicus and our ability to see how many people are actually viewing our livestream or viewing the videotaped portion of the meetings. And it sounds like they don't tell us or we, we can't get that information from them. So that would be something to try to figure out if, you know, how many. So that would be something to try to figure out if, you know, how many people are actually participating? If you count the room tonight, in most board meetings, we have very few people, like in single digits. I can count them on my fingers. And, and that's unfortunate. I mean, I would love to see more participation. And, and if there is a lot of participation and at least viewing, that's great, but we don't know that. We're, you know, we're, you, we have this tool, but I'd like to know exactly if, if that tool's worthwhile and if there's other ways, you know, videotaping and putting it on YouTube.
Which we do.
Can I, can I adhere with that? So like videotaping or like doing the, you know, the meeting on like social media, you know, like if you do it on, I don't know if there's like a Facebook page or something for the board members or for the district where you could, you know, just go live stream, you know, and then you will actually see like how many people are viewing your information. You will get comments, but that means, you know, like that's the comedy part of it. I mean, that's another way.
Now, if I can add something, Granicus does maintain, does offer analytics. You may remember, Mike, that the last time you asked about it, they were transitioning from one form of analytics creation to another.
Right.
I know that they have analytics. I know that Tammy has accessed them, for example. So if you're interested in seeing what they offer now, we can certainly produce that.
Yeah, I don't think they offered really any ability the last time to, to break it down, but if they do now, that would be great to see.
We did have some information, I'm just pulling it up.
Okay, I, I, okay.
So, yeah, we can, we can update what we provided earlier.
Okay, great.
Okay, anything else? All right, with that, I'm going to call it, oh, I'm like a minute old.
Nope, not bad, not bad.
All right, I believe that brings us to our adjournment then.
I must have the wrong agenda because mine says adjourn at 9:00 P.M.
I, I just think it's skillful facilitation.
For another 40 minutes. Anyway, with that.
What is the problem? I just think it's super skillful facilitation.
With that, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.